Russ, could you lead us in the invocation?
Let us, let us stand.
Our Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings to rest upon us this morning. Thank you for giving us such a beautiful day here in southwest Florida. And Lord, as we see the agenda before us, we ask for your guidance and your wisdom. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Remain standing for the pleasure of the leavings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Bob and Serby.
Here.
Barbara Craig.
Here.
Russ Wynn.
Here.
Larry Colander.
Here.
Richard Donnelly.
Here.
Roger Brunzow.
Here.
James Horser.
Here.
It's now time for a public comment. And it's my understanding that we do not have a rule that limits public comment, but I would ask you to keep the comments to a reasonable time so that we, yes, counsel?
If it's related to the particular case, I need to have sworn testimony. So it has to be, any comments regarding the case, I really need it to be during the case in chief so I can have people sworn in.
So people cannot comment on the?
People can comment on other matters, or if they'd like to talk quickly, we could get them, but we don't normally swear people in individually as a start for public comment. What we do is we take public comment during the case, after the two, the city and the applicant provide their case in chief, the public then normally has the opportunity to talk. But if somebody wants to be taken out of order, you certainly have courtesy to do so, but I do need to have them sworn in.
Okay, so what we'll do then is we'll, with the comment regarding the case, we will take that while, after the applicant and staff have made their presentations. Is that agreeable to both sides? John? To have public comment after your presentation? And is the applicant in, okay. So public comment on matters not pertaining to the case or hearing none, we will call the public hearing of the Terry Street Assemblage Mixed Use Plan Development.
Thank you, and this is case number PD-1631991BOS. It's a request to rezone approximately 3.4 acres from Sub Area 3A Commercial, 6B Mixed Use, and 4 Multifamily of the old US-41 corridor redevelopment master plan in the old US-41 redevelopment overlay district to a mixed-use plan development for up to 80 multifamily dwelling units and 29,000 square feet of commercial use. The property is located at 27080092 Old 41 Road, 27041 Old 41 Road, 272701 Center Avenue in Bonita Springs. At this time, I will swear in witnesses. Let's do the applicant and the applicant's witnesses. You will all raise your right hands if you plan to testify. Do you swear or affirm testimony you provide today's truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Now, some of you I know, some of you I don't know, and I'm gonna, and some of you may want to be reboiredered in front of the zoning board if it's been a while. Ms. Crespo, you've been tendered as an expert in the past in land use and planning. Next to you is?
Wojciech Kulicki.
Okay, please come up here. Would you please state your full name for the record again slowly for the court reporter?
Sure, Wojciech, W-O-J-C-I-E-C-H, Kulicki, K-U-L-I-C-K-I.
Okay, and are you going to be providing testimony today in the form of being an expert?
Yes.
Okay, and you are an architect in this state?
Yes.
And how, can you tell me about your education?
Graduated from the University of Miami with a degree, professional degree in architecture, 2006.
Okay, and how long have you been an architect?
I have been licensed for approximately 10 years.
Okay, and are you licensed in the state of Florida?
Yes.
Any other licenses?
No.
Do you hold any other professional affiliations?
I'm a member of the AIA.
Okay, and professional affiliations, any papers? Have you worked on projects that are comparable to this project?
Yes.
Could you tell the zoning board a little bit about those projects?
Sure, most recent's probably Bonita Village here in Bonita Springs. That came before the zoning board and city council approximately three years ago.
Were you an expert in that case?
Yes, I was.
Okay, and were you tendered as an expert by the zoning board at that time?
Not to this board, only to council at that time.
Okay, I believe he can be tendered as an expert in architecture?
Anybody have any objections to that on the board?
No. Thank you.
Ryan, could you, I should put a cheat sheet up here for myself.
That's quite all right.
Thank you, please state your full name, and remember, go slowly for the court reporter.
For the record, Ryan Binkowski with Waltrip Engineering. I'm a professional landscape architect in the state of Florida.
And are you registered in, how many years have you been a landscape architect?
Yes, ma'am, I've been registered in the state for 13 years. I've also carried licenses in Nevada and Texas in the past.
Okay, and can you tell us a little bit about your education?
I have an undergraduate degree, Bachelor of Landscape Architecture from Penn State University. I graduated in 2003.
And have you been tendered before this board before?
Yes.
You have, and as a landscape architect?
As a landscape architect.
And I believe he can be tendered as a landscape architect?
Any objection from the board?
Okay, Tony, you are not an expert at this point, but you've been tendered in. When we call your name, you'll get to show that you've been sworn in. Mr. Banks?
Yes, ma'am.
You have been tendered as an expert in the past in professional engineering, civil engineering, and transportation planning.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you, do you want to come up, or everybody pretty much has, are familiar with him? And the gentleman? You want to come up?
Oh, I thought.
No, no. We're good, we're good.
But if you want. Mr. King, are you an expert?
In this forum, I don't believe I have been, but I've been to other hearings here. Just to answer questions, I've never given testimony.
Are you planning to have him as an expert?
We ask him to be accepted as an expert in environmental?
Come on up, Mr. King. Please state your full name for the record.
My name is Tyler King. I'm the president of Dex Better and Associates, and we are the environmental consultant for the applicant.
And can you tell us a little bit about your education and training?
Sure, I graduated college in 1981. I've been an environmental consultant in Fort Myers for 30 years. Testified many Lee County zoning and hearings, but again?
And you were recognized as an expert in the Lee County hearings?
Yes.
Could you tell us what you were tendered as an expert in, or recognized as an expert in?
Vegetation, wildlife.
Environmental planning?
Yes.
Okay, and out of curiosity, what is your degree in?
I have a bachelor's degree in biology.
Okay. And where is that from?
From Northeast Louisiana University, which no longer exists. They changed their name.
Right, it's now LSU.
ULM, right.
And is that in Natchitoches?
It's in Monroe.
Monroe.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I could've said Ruston, so.
All right, thank you. I believe he can be tendered as an expert?
No objection, without objection.
Thanks, so that's all of their side. If I could have, aside from my next Louisiana person, but if I can have staff, please stand, raise your right hand if you're going to testify in this case. Do you swear firm testament, as well as, Sam, please? Do you swear firm testimony you provide today's the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Now, I'm gonna say each person. Stuart Smith, you've been tendered as an expert in the past in civil engineering and transportation planning, or more civil engineering. John Dolmer in land use and planning. Ms. Gensen, land use and planning, Jacqueline Gensen. Jay Sweet, now this gets a long one for me. You are AICP as a planner, so land use and planning. You also?
Surveyor.
A surveyor, and you've also been an appraiser. No, okay, just surveyor. And Sam, you've also been tendered as an expert in the past in architecture. Okay, and now let me get citizens. Now, what I do normally with citizens is I pass the mic.
Ms. Vance? Before you go to the citizens, what I would request is to see if the applicant has any objections to those tenders and have the zoning board agree to those tenders.
Thank you.
We have no objections.
Any comment by the zoning board?
No.
No. Thank you, Ms. Vance, so order.
Thank you. I'm going to pass the mic around, and each person can state their name again. We need the court reporter to understand what you're saying and the reason for the mic so we can hear it. If you don't want to testify, feel free to pass the mic to someone else. I just want to get the most people as possible. If you decide not to, don't think that I've memorized which person should testify. I need you to be sworn in and just remind me you need to be sworn in. Sir? Just state your full name. Let me, actually, those who are going to testify, stand up, let me break, swear you in. Do you swear or affirm testimony you provide today is the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. All right, if you'll state your full name, sir?
My name is Lloyd Fredendall, F-R-E-D-E-N-D-A-L-L.
You're gonna have to talk a little louder, closer to the mic. FR is?
Catch it?
First name is Lloyd.
Lloyd, yeah.
Ma'am?
Victoria Conti, I live in the neighborhood.
Again, you're gonna have to project, or it's not, just be picking up.
That way here.
Victoria Conti, C-O-N-T-I, right, I live in the neighborhood. Barbara Booger.
There you go.
Resident, nothing like it. And could you spell the last name? B-O-O-C-H-E-R. Thank you.
John Pano, Bonita Springs Downtown Alliance, local resident, business owner.
Mike Gibson, G-I-B-S-O-N, local businessman in downtown Bonita.
Kathy McGrath, M-C-G-R-A-T-H, longtime resident of Bonita Springs.
My name is Elizabeth Witkop, W-I-T-K-O-P. I'm a resident and also work in the area.
Thanks, Ms. Crespo, you may proceed with starting your case.
Excuse me, one second, please. Mr. Theriaak, sorry to interrupt you. I have a legal question before we begin. We are in a somewhat unique situation in that the comp plan amendment that was originally requested by the applicant was finally passed on the 20th, but to my knowledge, it hasn't been converted to an ordinance.
No.
Has it?
Yes.
So everything is done, so that, that's the statute that we're operating under?
Yes, it still needs to be sent to the Department of Economic Opportunity, and that needs to be done within 10 days of the city council hearing. But the city council did vote to approve that last Wednesday.
And what they voted to approve contained a sentence that, with regard to compatibility, is that correct?
There were two sentences. There was one that pertained, oh, gosh, now you got me doing it from memory, Mr. Chairman. John?
I'm pulling it up.
I know there was one sentence, was it the density was the first one? There we go. Thank you. Yes, there was, there were two sentences. 6B indicated that the allowable density shall be determined on a case-by-case basis subject to compatibility with surrounding properties and appropriate transition to lands located outside the Terry Street sub-district. And then there was also, in 6D, the provision that deals with the maximum allowable height, the sentence stated allowable height shall be determined on a case-by-case basis subject to compatibility with surrounding properties and appropriate transition to lands located outside the Terry Street sub-district.
It's my understanding that at the LPA, the applicant disagreed with that. If that still remains the case, are we still within the period where the applicant can challenge?
Yes.
Where does that leave us? If the applicant goes ahead and cha, is there any, first, let me, it may resolve itself. Does the applicant intend to challenge what city council did?
No, sir.
Okay, so that solves the problem.
Thank you, sir.
It's over. So we're operating under the amended comprehensive plan?
Yes, sir, under ordinance number 1809, which amended Old 41 to add the Terry Street sub-district.
Okay, thank you. So you can proceed now, I'm sorry to interrupt that, but I wanted to be clear where we were legally.
In case any of your witnesses need it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For the record, Alexis Crespo with Waltrip Engineering, representing the applicant. I just want to start off by thanking the zoning board for having this special meeting for us so that we can stay on track with our, our hearing schedule moving before council. So thank you very much for that. We do have a presentation to walk you through the details of this mixed-use plan development rezoning request. You have met our team here to present the details. And where we like to start is just kind of a refresher on downtown Bonita Springs. The city has spent over 10 years planning for the redevelopment of this area, writing policies, creating illustrative renderings guiding development in this area. So we wanted to start there and how this proposed mixed-use plan development can serve as a key catalyst to get that vision underway in the downtown area. We also want to touch on what was just approved in terms of the text amendment, as these are very closely correlated, and we want to make sure everyone's clear on, on that text and how this amendment is directly consistent with what was just passed by council. And then walk you through some of the details of the rezoning request. So to start, the city, again, has spent a lot of time on this, the vision for downtown Bonita Springs, and they spent a lot of money improving the streetscape, the landscape, and it's looking really good down there, and this vision is starting to come together. And so some of the key statements that ties back to our request in the stated vision for downtown Bonita Springs is this is really the heart of the city, and it should have a mix of uses ranging from places where people can live, work, and play, meaning live, multifamily, above residential units, entertainment, restaurants, employment, office-type uses should all be integrated into this downtown area. And it was also emphasized that this should happen in a mixed-use format where folks can walk amongst those different uses, highlighted and anchored by the Imperial River. So the subject property is right in the, the heart of this downtown redevelopment area. The four parcels that are subject to the mixed-use plan development request are under control by Mr. Manzalillo and Mr. Shapiro, total 3.4 acres in size. You can see they're generally located south of Terry Street on both sides, east and west of Old 41, and then on both sides of Center Avenue. The properties do have access from all those publicly maintained arterial roadways. The Maria's parcel is the only developed portion of the site. It's got the existing restaurant use and supportive parking, and all lands on the east of 41 are vacant and partially vegetated. What was approved on June 20th unanimously, I'll make note, by your city council was the creation of a Terry Street sub-district that would allow for the blending of densities and intensities of uses. We were working with staff for over two years on language to allow for mixed-use development to occur in the downtown area, and staff crafted this language. We appreciate all the time and effort they put into putting together language that works for the applicant, and that is what was approved by council, and it applies to 6.1 acres generally.
Excuse me, one second. You, you mentioned the concept of blending.
Yes.
Would you take a minute and explain the concept of blending to the zoning board before you move forward?
I'm gonna advance to this slide.
Okay, so you're gonna do that later?
Well, yeah, let me, if you don't mind, let me just, oh, now I'm going all the way. Let me just explain the, the proposed text amendment applies to everything in red, and what is starred is owned by the applicant. So they're, they control over half of the area that's the Terry Street sub-district by way of this past ordinance, and the other lands are not owned where they are not starred. So why was this amendment needed? What is this blending concept? The redevelopment master plan was approved in 2009 when there were very different state standards in place regarding density, intensity, et cetera. And so the consultant at the time had to work within somewhat of a limiting framework, and they created these different sub-areas that you can see in the expanded legend there on the right-hand side of the screen. So the downtown area, which is expansive, as you can see outlined in purple, was delegated to all these different use areas, single-family, townhome, multifamily, and only very small portions were placed in that light purple mixed use. And so this amendment was required because the, the sub-areas owned by the applicant are 3A, 3B, 6B, and 4. And so we've got scenarios where you have parcels within these sub-areas where they can do commercial-only or residential-only, and that mixed-use vision, the idea of having, people having apartments over top of restaurant space just couldn't happen by way of this redevelopment map because the uses were so tightly confined in these sub-areas. So our comp plan amendment allows if someone acquires multiple properties and multiple sub-areas, for example, Mr. Manzalillo has a residential-only and a commercial-only, he can do a PD and have mixed-use buildings that have some of that residential he's allowed to have, as well as some of the commercial, with limitations on the density and intensity, and the review of compatibility, which we're gonna address in detail. So the idea is if you have parcels in one or more sub-area, you can use the uses within the various parcels and within the plan development regardless of which sub-area the parcel falls within. Is that?
Clear, everybody?
Fairly clear.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So the amendment allows for mixed use, vertically-integrated mixed use to happen on Old 41 at the corner of Old 41 and Terry Street in the heart of downtown Bonita Springs, which, when you think of a downtown area, that, those mixed-use buildings are really important to capturing that, that urban form. So the key policy provisions that were adopted is, number one, plan development zoning is required so that this zoning board and city council can see the details of each development as it gets proposed in terms of where the buildings are located, what are the uses, buffers, development regs. So we understood there needed to be a strong level of oversight when blending was occurring so that it was very clear of what the city was getting in this sub-district area. Another key policy provision was density at a maximum of 20 units per acre and an FAR of .5 intensity. And the idea there was to kind of limit the intensity as we're blending across these projects to protect the residential, single-family areas on the periphery of the downtown area. You wouldn't want really intensive commercial uses right next door to some of those existing single-family homes in the area. Staff proposed some simplified language that just simply allowed density and intensity to be calculated based on project acreage. And once we got there, this became a lot easier because we were using commercial conversion ratios as we developed this amendment in the past, using mechanisms that are allowed in your code and that have been applied to longitude and other projects in downtown. But what staff has proposed and what your council adopted was just a straight acreage and dense, units-per-acre density and intensity calc. So we think that was a big improvement in terms of you reviewing this amendment now. There were several sub-policies regarding compatibility with surrounding projects that through the plan development zoning, we would demonstrate how the proposed built-form uses, buffering, site development standards are gonna be compatible with surrounding lands. The comp plan also limited height to 55 feet, and they had a new measurement, instead of first finish floor elevation, which is about 10 feet in this area based on the underlying FEMA flood zone, the building measurement would start at the, at 18 inches above the crown of the road. So that's a much more limiting way of measuring building height. So the result is by lowering where you start measuring the building from, the overall building height will be lower. And I'll note that other areas within the urban core are allowed 65 feet per the comprehensive plan. So the applicant was in agreement with staff to not only limit the height from 65 to 55 in the comp plan, but then also go, take it a step further and start that measurement at the roadway crown as opposed to base flood elevation. And, and we're gonna further limit that through this PD rezoning request. As you can see in your staff report, we've actually come up with 45 feet, again, to address compatibility, and we'll, we'll get into those details. But for the purposes of the comp plan, we did limit this area in terms of height. So where all this takes us is a mixed-use plan development rezoning request for you today to rezone the assemblage currently in a variety of different sub-areas to allow for the development of 80 dwelling units and 29,000 square feet of commercial uses. The master concept plan, which we'll present in detail today, outlines the site development program. On Maria's parcel, we refer to that as Building 1 or B1, where we're proposing a mixed-use building where we could have residential living units above first-floor retail and office space. The intent there with the pink would be a recreation building to service the proposed development, potentially be open to the public, and then parking in the rear. And then as you move to the east of Old 41, we have, again, in purple, mixed-use buildings where we could have bottom-floor residential, or bottom-floor retail, office, commercial space, and upper-story residential. We've integrated some, some civic space, and Wojciech and Ryan are gonna speak to this in much more detail, but just to kind of set you up of what you're looking at when we get into these details. Centralized parking and civic space and to block view of parking from the key corridor, which is your Old 41. And then as we move further east of Center Avenue, we have these pink buildings which are residential-only, and the idea was to step down the intensity of the project as you get to Lightner Creek and some of these single-family neighborhoods on the edge of downtown, and have those be residential-only so they wouldn't have commercial uses close to them. And so those would be a townhome-type building with first-floor garages with upper-story residential units. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ryan Binkowski, who's gonna talk about how this master concept plan works with this urban form that the city's looking to achieve in their downtown area.
Good morning, everyone. My role in this presentation is really to give some context to why we've designed the site the way we have, how we've laid it out, and what types of modifications we've made to it through the design process. We began designing this project approximately three years ago. The application fell and has been, we've been working with staff for about two years, but as we were beginning with the project, one of the things that became very apparent is that the form of Bonita Springs, the, the, the pattern in which the buildings fall, the relationships they have to the street, what makes downtown feel like downtown, had some very suburban characters to it. With the project underway, the, I'm sorry, the, the Old 41 redevelopment project underway at the time, it was clear that the city was making the investment that had been in planning for so many years, and ultimately what was going to be designed with this project and ultimately what you guys would be looking at with any project coming through, really needed to be representative of what that vision or that, that, that future form of the city was going to take. So with that, part of the discussion be, became very quickly to understand, you know, what do the footprints on the ground, the buildings in Bonita Springs start to look like? And so we labeled it Terry Street and Old 41 for reference. You can see, we pulled the city's GIS map to look at the building footprints, and a lot of the single-family residential on the periphery has spread out, but where you would typically see the main street character with lots of buildings fronting on the street did not exist in consistent, inconsistent pattern. There were small blocks, and many of them had the parking out front, head-in parking, and was very, you know, developed from an evolutionary basis, you know, as, as projects came in over the course of several decades here. The- The city's done a great job in making improvements to the code that try to start to focus the process in which development is going to occur, how it's being reviewed, the architectural standards, common color palettes. And then, you know, along with that, a lot of aesthetic-based codes and requirements. You know, when you look at the aerial, it doesn't provide the same pictures as you get when you look at the figure ground or the, the black footprints. And so what, what we wanted to do is as we were designing the project, we wanted to really start to focus on our segment of Old 41 here and how the buildings were going to start to get away from maybe, you know, that suburban storefront commercial look. This is not, you know, what we want. This is not what we've heard over the years of deliberation and discussion about the Old 41 project. And while this type of project technically meets some of the criteria, it lacks the aesthetic controls that, you know, you want to be able to have in order to develop a quality project, something with a street identity, something that's revitalized and invigorated with commerce, where you have, you know, different types of uses on the second and third floors of these buildings, where you have alleyways through, you have focal vistas to little parklet spaces and fountains. You know, a couple of these pictures may look familiar to them, to you, you know. What the city of Naples have done on Fifth Avenue is, you know, by reference, you know, it doesn't have to be what Benita Springs looks like. But by reference, that's a good example of a redevelopment effort. The city of Fort Myers is a little bit more urban in that there's multiple blocks of this. There's not just one singular main street. Winter Park is a, a good example, which was an old city that went through a redevelopment and, you know, has a main street that cuts through it as well as, you know, more densified urban blocks. The, the one on the left is what we previously were looking at. But this is a hypothetical, let's just throw the heavy footprint at the wall. What are we talking about if the city were to, you know, maximize that, that urban form character or what we would call a block pattern? This is where the buildings are facing onto the street. Your back of house or parking and utilities, things like that would take place in the center of the blocks. This is obviously exaggerated, you know, look at what that would be. And enlarging it, you know, the, I think there's the physical form that the block pattern starts to create where there's, you know, at, at least one centralized, uniform corridor, which, you know, we would be looking at as Old 41. But then comes the conversation of use, you know, what uses are appropriate along there versus, say, Center Street? In a form-based code, which is, you know, really the foundation of what we're talking about and, you know, what the city is, began engaging another consultant on, is, you know, not just looking at what physically, you know, makes a, a main street or, you know, a, a town center, but also provides for intense uses being located in one location and a step-down of intensities as you get away from that more intense use. Some people will refer to that as transx or transect-based design. As we're looking at this, the blue, you know, could be an example of where the mixed-use was more appropriate. And as, as you step down to the rear, you get away from it. There's, you know, a number of different ways that you could carve this, this up. However, it's relative to what, you know, your, your adjacent uses are. We've done for the, the purpose of, you know, looking at what the uses are, we've shown our mixed-use buildings as a portion of that block form, understanding that this is just a, a piece of the pie as will, you know, as will be most projects that come in. It's not going to be, you know, every project's not going to be a bamboo village, so to speak, where you have, you know, a full block or two contiguous. And what's critical is that development, you know, redevelopment be able to occur where a, a portion of that block pattern can be envisioned and be met and be, you know, continued in the future through something more of a form-based code. When we started this project and, you know, part of this explanation was to help educate, you know, the, the staff and you all on what we were trying to do from a plan. However, we didn't have the luxury of a form-based code being underway. And with the advent of the white paper that staff submitted to council last December, this, you know, helped, I think, you know, understand exactly why, you know, the need of that type of code is, is present and why it's going to be more beneficial for the city going forward. So maybe the project overview is a little, you know, out of, of shape in this location here. But before Wojcik comes up and talks a little bit more about the vertical buildings, understand that our goal is, you know, all, all along here has been to look at this as a redevelopment project that helps recognize a pattern for the city of Benita Springs and helps, you know, put the focus on the importance of individual redevelopment projects being able to occur with it, with a, a, a pattern, a block pattern in place going forward with this project and with others.
Good morning. Again, for the record, Wojcik Kaliki. I'm an architect with PK Studios in Naples. And my role is to walk you through the architectural components and site components of the project and answer any questions on the details you may have. Project overview, essentially, we're asking to build 80 dwelling units on this site and 29,000 square feet of commercial space, which will include retail, office, and restaurants. The building generally along Old 41 will be ground-floor commercial and upper-story residential. That includes the, the building along Terry Street as well. And buildings further east along Center Avenue are intended to be residential-only with ground-floor garages. This slide was, was up previously, but this is essentially a rendering looking from the north to the south. So on the right here is Old 41. This is central. You've got Terry Street going east-west here. So these are the three mixed-use buildings. And then the buildings on the far east part of the site are residential. I think one of the defining features of the project is the vertical mixed-use that we're planning for the three mixed-use buildings on the site. That was the main reason for the comp plan amendment that went through the LPA and council over the last few months. And we really feel that this is the, the right vision going forward for downtown Benita. And we're, we're trying to set a, a good precedent for architecture in that area. And there's certainly a lot of other precedent. Ryan had some slides up previously showing you other cities in Florida. But vertical mixed-use is a, is a well-established precedent for activating downtowns, for having ground-floor commercial space that really livens the, the streetscape, engages pedestrians, allows the residents who are living upstairs in these buildings to come down and use the amenities and walk up and down Old 41 and make it a very active streetscape. So essentially what we're, what we're looking to build is, once again, commercial at grade level. We want to be able to connect all the functions, commercial, residential, and, and be able to feed that, those commercial uses, whether they're restaurant, retail, or office, with a, a lot of pedestrian traffic and a lot of, basically be able to slow down vehicles that pass through that area and face, provide a good face, facade to the streetscape, be able to take parking and move it behind the buildings so that the, the streetscape is maintained. The ground-level walkways that you see in this rendering, particularly on the, the building on the left, are meant to, again, engage the pedestrian network, provide connections. You'll see it in another slide to the back of these buildings and throughout the site. One of the important things for this owner is to really open up the site. We don't want this to be a walled-in development. We really want this to be a, 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 a public or semi-public space. There's going to be a park that's integrated into the, into the site as well as a kayak launch that I'll point out again on the aerial. So we, we really want this to feel like a, like an open and inviting development. So again, the, the design of the buildings is intended to bring the buildings down to a very pedestrian level. That's why you'll see the, some of the deviations that we're asking for. We're asking for the first floor to be 10 feet from the property line and then the upper stories are set back. That was something that was very important to council to make sure that we don't have a canyon effect downtown in Old 41 as you're walking or driving down these massive buildings going up around you. We want to be able to avoid that through building massing and through the architecture. This is a slide showing essentially what the streetscape would look like with the buildings along Old 41 and the left and the right. And you can see some of those setbacks in play here. The second and, and third floors are, are set back 10 feet further than the first floor. And then again, some of the fourth floors on the buildings are set back even further. So we're trying to really open up, open up the streetscape while still providing a, a, a good feel to the first level for pedestrians. Because it is important to be close to the street, close to the sidewalks for, for engagement, for commercial purposes, and to, to make the streetscape feel welcome for pedestrians. But at the same time, it's also important to, to really open up the street section to, to not make this feel like a canyon. This is a section through Old 41. We're showing the right-of-way there. The vertical lines here are the property lines. And Alexis will discuss the deviations further, but essentially this, this shows you the concept of what we're asking for there. The first floor is going to be 10 feet from the property line on both sides and the second floor will be set back 20 feet from the property line. And we're also looking at setting back some of the fourth floors further to, to, further open up that street section. In terms of building height, these are building heights essentially from grade with the understanding that the comp plan defines the, the building height, 18 inches above the, the crown of road. But just to give you a reference point for what we're asking for from grade, our intent is to construct these buildings at grade level. We don't intend to build at FEMA. We intend to build down to grade level and flood-proof these buildings. That's critical for, for retail and, and restaurant space as well as for pedestrian access into, into these buildings. And the overall height to the eve, we're intending for that to be 45 feet. And that, again, is, is lower than what's permitted here under the comp plan and the land development code. But it is, it is sufficient for what we're trying to do with these buildings. I'll just skip over this slide. So density and intensity, now that with the comp plan amendment essentially in place, that's simplified a lot of what we're trying to do with the density and intensity. Again, we're going to be at 20 units per acre for residential and 29,000 square feet of commercial. One of the things I, I do want to point out on this slide is this large, open park that the developer intends to build. And that is accessed either through various points on the site, but importantly, under, through the center cut essentially on the first floor of this building here. So if you're walking along Old 41, you're able to take a peek through the center of the building and be able to access the back of that site. It's, it's kind of an inviting moment. You'll see a lot of these, Ryan brought up Fifth Avenue in Naples. You'll see a lot of those kinds of moments down on Fifth Avenue where you have alleys that cut through in between buildings and you're able to get to the, to the backs of, of buildings or to Cambier Park, for example. The kayak launch is located back in, in the back area of the site here. And that, again, that park serves as a, as a means of being able to traverse the site and, and access that kayak launch. And all these are intended to be part of the public amenities of downtown Benita. In terms of parking, we intend to comply with the land development code. The parking is a combination of surface parking that's located behind buildings. So we've, we've very strategically placed it so that it is not as visible from the street. We want the buildings to be front and center from the street, really define, help define the street and parking to be hidden away in the back. We also have some buildings that will have parking on the first floor. So these, these two residential buildings back here, because of FEMA and because of the, the building design, will have first-floor parking with residences overhead. So again, this is the view from Old 41 looking into the park, park area that you can see behind the building back here. And this, this kind of design really helps to engage pedestrians that are walking along Old 41. It, it helps to, whatever restaurant or retail might end up in this first floor, it's going to, to help those folks as well. You're going to have side-facing storefront windows essentially along that walkway. And then it'll be a, a great, a great moment to kind of invite you to walk through and into the site. In terms of our architectural style, we're looking to build essentially an old Florida style. We've got a lot of, a lot of those old Florida elements on the building. We think this is very consistent with where Benita is trying to go architecturally. The colors of the buildings are all consistent with the, with the zoning code. And again, this is, we think it's very in line with, with what prior councils and zoning boards have, have indicated they would like to see downtown. I will turn it back to Alexis at this point for some additional information.
Thank you for your attention again, Alexis Crespo. For the record, we are going to be wrapping up our presentation here. I just want to hit on some of the, the more technical details of the request before we hand it over to staff. So as Wojcik noted, we have two deviations related to the building setbacks. The first deviation is to allow a 20-foot maximum second-story, second-story setback where the code requires a 10-foot maximum. So what the code is trying to do, and that, that would apply to our mixed-use buildings as highlighted on the master concept plan. And so what the code says is you should have your building no more than 10-foot setback from the roadway because they really want that urban feel where your building is right on, on the street level with the exception of maybe a sidewalk, promenade area. But we don't want the building set way back into the site where you'd have parking in front of the building and it looks suburban in character like it kind of does today. So new buildings coming up have these maximum setbacks instead of minimum setbacks that we're used to seeing. And so what we, and we were pleased to, to meet that requirement. However, when we went to council, it was clear, you know, with, with the style of the buildings, the height being proposed, they wanted the buildings to step back into the site as you move to the upper stories to, again, eliminate any potential canyon effect. We certainly would submit that based on the, the building height being lower than what was permitted by the code, that that would not be the case. But we were happy to take another look at the design of the building and then recess or step back those upper stories so that they're a little bit farther off the road to give a little bit more width to that streetscape feel in this location. So that's deviation one, and that really was at the request as we, of council as we went through some of the details on the comp plan. Deviation two is again related to not meeting a maximum setback for buildings four and five. And those are the residential-only buildings highlighted on the screen there. And so this building is approximately 225 feet off of the Center Avenue roadway. And that's to provide the space for this central promenade and civic area that's going to ultimately access the kayak launch. So placing the building in that location was important to the, the site design. And then this building also needed relief from that maximum setback. And then, this building also needed relief from that maximum set-back. We are not requesting any deviations from your parking requirements, architectural standards. There's a lot of regulations in the Old 41 redevelopment code, and we are fully compliant with the exception of these two items regarding building placement. In terms of infrastructure, our application demonstrates there's adequate public infrastructure and services to support, again, the 80 dwelling units and 29,000 square feet of commercial. The city, I think that figure is higher than 20 million in terms of the investment in this area. So, there's adequate roadway capacity to provide for the proposed uses. We've secured letters of availability through the process, and there is water and sewer available from Benita Springs Utilities. Compatibility, always a big item when dealing with infill redevelopment, and certainly the comp plan does require us to demonstrate compatibility in terms of our built form with the surrounding development pattern. So, I've noted that we've transitioned our intensive mixed-use buildings with the commercial. Those are focused around the Old 41 frontage, and as we transition to the edges of downtown, we are stepping down intensity to residential-only buildings. We've proposed type A buffers, which are entirely consistent with what the code requires, between those townhome-style of units and adjacent single-family dwellings. So, we are meeting code requirements in terms of a buffer standard. And we've maintained compliance with all of the land development code regulations regarding mass and building height, et cetera. Comprehensive Plan consistency, we have a detailed staff report that highlights these policies, so I won't belabor each and every one of them. We also have our amendment application package as part of your record. We do find this amendment is consistent with all aspects of the Benita Comprehensive Plan, including the intent for redevelopment in Old 41, including compatibility with adjacent single-family residential areas and availability of infrastructure. In terms of the staff report, we do have a staff recommendation of approval for the proposed rezoning. We have appreciated working with staff on this. They put a lot of their efforts into trying to get the best program and plan moved forward for this site. They've noted that the densities and intensities are consistent with the newly adopted comprehensive plan language. There's appropriate and adequate infrastructure to support the uses, and they are recommending approval of both deviations. The only areas we're not in agreement are three conditions, and I think we've kind of worked out condition two. I am going to pass out what we would respectfully request the zoning board to consider in terms of modified conditions for two, four A, and six B.
Two, four A, and six B?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And these correlate to starting on page 30 of your staff report, where they get into conditions. And I won't speak for staff, but we did meet on Friday to discuss the schedule of uses, so I want to start with condition two, if I could. And what condition two is stating is limiting some of the commercial uses for building three. So, I've highlighted on the screen in the yellow what we're talking about when we're looking at condition two. It's the easternmost mixed-use building that is fronting on both Terry Street and Center Avenue. I believe staff's concern was, there should be some limitations on the type of commercial uses in that building. It's going to be first-floor, retail office, commercial, and we should limit some of those uses because we are transitioning to some single-family along Terry. So, what we proposed in our strike-through underline, they had concerns with, and we're in agreement on microbrewery, drugstore pharmacies, entertainment, musical entertainment, nightclubs, open markets. We agree those are too intensive, should be a special exception that goes back through a public hearing, should the applicant want to proceed with those uses. What we're requesting some modifications on is outdoor seating for dining. It's highly likely that, based on this arterial roadway frontage, that a cafe use could be appropriate in that building. What we'd say for outdoor seating is that, we agree there shouldn't be any live music associated with it, but if we do have outdoor seating before the hour of 10:00 PM, that would be appropriate in this location. Certainly after 10:00 PM, we wouldn't want to create any noise disturbances with some of those adjacent neighbors across Center Avenue, but before the hour of 10:00 PM, having outdoor seating without live entertainment or music, when we've got intervening public roadways, especially an arterial, highly-traveled roadway to our north, we would respectfully submit is appropriate at this location and would not create compatibility issues. And along that line, staff was limiting any restaurants from going in that building, and we would, again, respectfully request that restaurants be a permitted use, again, without live outdoor music associated with it and with very limited outdoor seating timeframes, as well as retail specialty foods. Boutique-ish food shops, cheese shops, things like that commonly pop up in these redevelopment-type of areas. So, we see that as a highly viable use for this building. And I have not struck through tavern, again, along the lines of nightclubs. The applicant is not wanting to do intensive-type uses like that there. So, that's what we were looking to do with condition two, and we'll hear from staff on how they feel about those changes. But we did discuss the potential for some dining in that building. Does the zoning board have any questions, or should I move on to?
Before you move on, the vice chairman in Serp, you had a -- you wanted to raise a point.
No, it's okay. Fine. No problem.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make sure I fully understand what you just did. Talked about, so we're talking about building three, and the staff recommends eight -- you show 8,000 square feet of commercial, and allowable is 4,000, so you're doubling that, then. Is that correct?
This has -- no, sir. This would not impact the size of the commercial in that building. It is 8,000 square feet of commercial permitted on the first floor of building three. I think you're looking at the minimum-watt area dimensions. I haven't gotten to that yet.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I have a question, just to understand what the handout, excuse me, what the handout shows here, what's highlighted in yellow. I thought, what I heard you say, but what I'm looking at here is you've crossed out these restaurant-excluding group-one food stands, but you mentioned specifically retail specialty food as being allowable, yet it's crossed out on this, so I'm confused.
By crossing it off this list, because it is allowable in subareas that are allocated to these parcels, by crossing it out, we're making it permitted by right, which is counterintuitive, but thank you for clarifying that. So, by crossing it off this list, we're, it's not going to require a special exception and would be allowed by right because it's in subareas one, six B, and three A.
And staff has agreed with that.
Jackie just saw this this morning because we met late Friday afternoon, so we did discuss the 10 after 10:00 PM, and she was going to think about it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman. You're saying that you're allowed a cafe on that bottom floor, right? Doesn't that go against the retail specialty foods, including sale of prepared foods?
We would request the ability to do a cafe. The way this is worded now, we would have to come back for a special exception to have a cafe use, which would be your group-three restaurant, which is your third-to-last bullet point, meaning it would require a special exception, and we're asking for the ability to allow that by right.
Counsel.
So, the difference is whether or not you feel it's necessary to have conditions for these type of uses and require a special exception, or if you feel that applicant, the applicant could do it themselves without a special exception. I do want to point out that, should you be inclined for outdoor seating for dining purposes, it's not just the evening hours, but also sometimes early morning hours. Let's say somebody has a breakfast house, you might want to have the prohibition being between whether 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM would require the special exception, or 8:00 AM, whatever time you think is, you know, because if somebody has to start seeing people lining up next to their house, you know, you may want to condition that use, if you're inclined to even go forward with this.
Thank you. Mr. Theriault, do you have anything to say about this?
I do have a question. Ms. Crespo, you struck through restaurant-excluding group-one, et cetera, et cetera. You left drive-thru.
We're amenable to any drive-thru requiring a special exception. There's no intent to do such an auto-oriented use within this development.
So, that's not just restaurant, drive-thru, it's any commercial drive-thru?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
That's the clarification, if it's okay if I ask a question. I'm not exactly clear what that restaurant-excluding group food stands under for and mobile food vendors and so on. Are you saying you want that to be as a matter of right, that you can do those things?
Correct. And by having it on this list, we would have to get a special exception for that use.
So, are you contemplating mobile food vendors in this?
If I may, mobile food vendors would still be prohibited under the special supplementary district regulations unless there is some reason why it needs to be added in.
I can check on that when.
It just seems to me that, since you're building places specifically for events, you wouldn't want to be having mobile food vendors as part of that.
Correct.
So, I was quite confused by that particular cross-out, which if I understand now, the yellow things here are what you want to have left in as a matter of right, not have to get special exceptions for. Is that right?
Correct. We want to comply with the use chart in your code for downtown that has the list of permitted uses for areas six B and three A. I believe the mobile food vendors would not, by striking it, we would not be allowed to do it. I will come back and clarify that, though. And that is highly convoluted.
And I think the drive-thru thing's ought to also be clarified, because it looks from this as if you're trying to leave those as a matter of right.
By leaving it.
Drive-thru, you do leave not in yellow. Okay. It's sort of, it is counterintuitive, so I'm trying to wrap my head around it here. Okay.
Mr. Theriault.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also just got this a few moments ago, so I apologize if I've had a piecemeal a little bit. Ms. Crespo, your slide, first bullet, refers to restaurant and outdoor dining without music. Where do I find the limitation without music?
Musical entertainment is the fourth bullet and would require special exception approval, and we're not proposing to change that. So, we're simply saying a restaurant with outdoor seating limited to 10:00 PM could be permitted by right by way of these amendments.
What, does musical entertainment envision live performance or just music playing on a speaker?
I would submit that it's piped music, could be television sets. Typically, staff treats that pretty restrictively, and we're amenable to that interpretation.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing, please.
Please.
Going back to the outdoor seating for dining purposes, I think it should be in there that if we go with rule of thumb with restaurants and so forth in Benita, 7:00 in the morning, not before 7:00 AM. And here's a question. You're saying after 10:00 PM. Now, if people are sitting out there at 10:00, 10:00 o'clock, 10 after 10:00, what's going to prevent them from sitting out there, say, till 11:00 to finish their dinner or whatever? How are you going to prevent that?
The operator of the restaurant would have the zoning conditions, and certainly they'd be subject to code enforcement action if it was documented that they were not abiding by the zoning conditions.
I'd like to see that in the deviation, that they can't seat before 7:00 AM, and that everybody has to be out by 10:00 PM, because you've got people living around there. You don't want them to hear various noises till 11:00.
Anything else from the board at this moment? Please proceed.
Thank you. On the bottom of page one is where we start with the minimum-watt area and dimensions, and this is, Ms. Gensen pointed this out on Friday, that what was in the staff report, which we provided, the applicant provided, didn't comply with the LDC in that, in your downtown area, there are no minimum-watt sizes and there is no maximum-watt coverage. So, the strike-through you see on the bottom of page one and the majority of page two, those are simply cleaning up the site development regulations, so they comply with the land development code, really at the suggestion of staff. The exception to that would be where, on maximum building height, we are requesting 45 feet for the residential buildings.
That would be buildings four and five?
Correct. But for the rest of those strike-through, you see, under site development regulations, we're eliminating the minimum-watt area and width, because those are controlled by the setbacks in the downtown area, and they're not looking to have suburban-style maximum-watt coverage in the downtown. They want to see it developed out in that urban form that Ryan showed you. And I think we'll hear from staff that they're generally in agreement with that. So, that gets us to, in our opinion, the most substantive item that we're respectfully requesting the zoning board grant to the applicant, which is to allow for a building height of 45 feet, based on our more restrictive measurement from the crown of road, for buildings four and five, which are those pink buildings in the eastern portion of the project. So, those are proposed as four stories, but that's a bottom-floor garage and three floors over those garage units. So, I've noted that, in general, when we start at the hierarchy of your policy framework for height in downtown, the comp plan says 65 foot is the maximum height measured from base flood elevation in the down, generally in the urban core of Old US 41. And that was, I believe, put into the comp plan back when they did the vision and the renderings to say, this is not going to be an urban city of Fort Myers downtown with 20-story buildings along the riverfront. This is Benita Springs. You can see the character in the rendering behind you. We want to keep that small-town charm. So, that's the baseline in your comp plan. And as you move to your land development code, the height does get more restrictive in chapter four, where in the urban core, the maximum building height is further limited down to 52 feet, but again, measured from base flood elevation, which, in this part of town, because of the river, base flood elevation is about 10-foot NABD. So, we're having to start that finished floor pretty high in order to meet current flood elevations. So, what we've done is lowered where the building height starts, and I've got a good graphic here, to start not at the 10-foot NABD, but the crown of the road, and have that measurement to the eve at 45 feet, which is lesser than what your comp plan says should be done, lesser than what your code says should be done in this urban core area, and then a more restrictive measurement. I'll note that the neighboring single-family dwellings to the east of the property along Center are allowed 35 foot, but measured from first finished flood elevation, meaning they're starting up here with their measurement, and they can go 35 feet. So, I'm hopeful this graphic kind of paints the picture. The applicant's proposed building height and measurement of that building height is what's shown on the left-hand side of your screen. What can be developed in the single-family adjacent areas is shown on the right. So, our building height is starting here at the roadway, and we're going up 45 feet to the eve. The neighboring building starts their building height measurement at FEMA and then can go up 35 feet. So, when you look at the difference, I would submit to you this is entirely compatible. We're not creating a situation where you've got building height that is very different between adjacent properties. When redevelopment occurs along these side streets that front on Terry Street, we're likely to see redevelopment in this format. And because of the more restrictive measurement we've proffered and the 45-foot limitation we're putting on ourselves, there's really not a significant difference between what can be done. between what can redevelopment on these adjacent properties and what we're proposing to do. And that extra story is very critical in achieving the 80 dwelling units and commercial space within the overall project. So it is very important to his development program and getting it all to work from a financial standpoint. And certainly, we've gone through the exercise of trimming down that building height to the minimum necessary to achieve those dwelling units. And then on top of that, working with PK Studios to make sure that the buildings are old Florida style, they've got the character, because when you have height difference between your neighboring property, it's really important you've got that architectural design in place to make sure that it's complementary and compatible.
I just want to understand.
Yes, sir.
What you're asking us to do, then, is to judge compatibility with the adjacent single-family homes, not by what's there, but by what the code allows?
Correct. Considering this is a redevelopment area, considering the intent and likelihood of these properties to change over time based upon their proximity to old 41 and the major arterials, and really the downtown plan that guides that, we would submit that. And another point to keep in mind is, when you look at the definition of compatibility, compatibility doesn't mean the two buildings have to be the same height in order to be compatible. If the building next door is 35 feet, you've got to be 35 feet, or you have not met the burden of compatibility. Compatibility is failure to communicate negative impacts to the adjacent property. And when we look at the long-term redevelopment, we look at the architectural design put into this project, the buffering, the building placement, the incorporation of that civic space along some of those shared edges, the sum of that, we would submit, will not negatively impact surrounding properties, will really be an enhancement to this area and improve view sheds in the area. The last condition I've, I'm talking so long, people are leaving. That's not good. I am wrapping up. Condition B is cross-access. It states several locations where our project needs to provide cross-access to our neighbors. Certainly, a good idea in urban redevelopment so that we're not funneling all the trips onto the arterial roadway network. So 6A addresses cross-access to the north and south from the Maria's parcel. We are providing that through our design. 6C requires cross-access to north and south. You can see where we have our future access label along the southern property line and then connections to get out to Terry, so we've satisfied that. The one parcel where we, cross-access is not contemplated and appears to be required by this condition is Mr. Shapiro's parcel that fronts on 41. And due to the built form of that site, there's simply no way to accommodate vehicular cross-access. We are providing pedestrian cross-access by way of our breezeway promenade. The neighboring properties are going to have the vehicular access from this existing alley immediately to the east of the property, so we'd respectfully request that requirement for cross-access specific to this parcel be eliminated from the conditions.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Relative to the access to Terry and that parking on the back of three, or in the front or in the rear, Building Three?
Right there?
Yes. I think that entrance and exit at that point should be eliminated. The, if you look at the aerial, which your sketch there very well portrays, you have that median. People coming out, for example, would have to cross three lanes of traffic to make a left turn. And we all know the traffic westbound on Terry kind of backs up at that point in peak periods. It would appear to me that would be very dangerous to allow the out movement, which would allow a left turn. Now, relative to in and right turns at that point, if you look at your block plan that was previously presented, like on page 53 of the package we got, that showed the big blocks that was presented earlier, yeah, there was no access allowed, and all the access was internally, like for example, off of Central where there was no access allowed. Now, I appreciate that the service station to the west has an in-out. Frankly, that's bad, but it was grandfathered in as a part of the right-of-way considerations for the construction of the roundabout, I'm sure, and is valid. But you use the term in your narrative to establish mid-block alleys, and that being the reason. My opinion, that's 1920 planning, 1920 planning, not 2020 planning. An alley entering and exiting at that point would produce a real conundrum in traffic, in my opinion, especially the out traffic. So I like to suggest you not have that entrance. And everybody enter and exit onto Central, and you could do a little back-in, for I appreciate that would be a dead-end run to parking going north in, as they access that. And if there's no parking space, you'd have to provide a block, that last parking space so somebody could turn around, if there's no parking available. But that's common.
I've noted that, and while staff is presenting, I'll confer with the applicant team on our design and how removal of that would comport. And we can readdress that with the board following staff's.
Well, should that be a condition? My opinion, it should be.
Will, I'd like to hear from staff on this. I mean, we're a little out of sequence here. Just give us a minute. Do you plan to discuss this in your presentation? Good. Thank you. Is that all right, Jim?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Is it appropriate this time to possibly ask about the parking shown?
Sure.
In my count, you have 166 parking spaces. That allows for 18 under each of the two buildings, and there's no description of what that would be. I just assume you could possibly get 18 spaces under buildings four and five each. So adding those in to the spacing, spaces indicated, I came up with 166 parking spaces. Could you go through the allowable required, excuse me, the allowable required parking, for the various uses, for the apartments, for example? There's no indication on how many bedrooms are going to be in these apartments, and I'm very unclear about in this central district here, how many spaces are required. I recognize there's going to be parking not necessarily needed for guests to the restaurants, because they live there, and they don't need parking. But could you go through how you complied with the parking requirements?
Yes, sir. So the multifamily requires, I believe, two spaces per unit. Some of that is within internal garage within the building, and some of it is through surface parking. The remaining parking is for a mix of office and retail. We don't know the exact tenants, so we cannot pinpoint the exact amount of parking spaces. What we can assure you is, we've asked for no deviation from parking requirements. So when Mr. Manzalillo comes in with his tenants for Building One, he will comply with the number of spaces required, whether that be restaurant, retail, or office. I can pull up the code here in a moment and just walk you through how many spaces are required per use. But we mapped out, I believe, based on approximately 50% office, 50% retail, restaurant, and that's how we came to our number of parking spaces.
Okay. But I agree with what you've just said. If you have 80 units, that's 160 parking spaces.
There's actually a reduction for mixed-use development.
Yeah, I don't have the parking in front of me, for the record. Voichek Kaliki, I believe this area requires, are you going to pull it up? I believe it's one space per unit for residential and three per thousand for retail use, and two per thousand for office. So while I don't have it in front of me, we've gone through it a number of times, and the parking is compliant, as far as we can tell, based on our design.
So the key there was I misspoke with the two spaces per unit. He clarified it's one space per unit.
That's probably what you said, too. Okay. All right. Well, I assume that'll be hashed out at the LDO process then, and when the uses can be more defined?
Yes, sir.
Because we don't want to exacerbate the parking situation as a result of this development.
Correct. And that's why we sought no deviation from those requirements.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
On the subject of parking, I had made a previous note. You have a kayak launch between Building Four and Five. That's going to require some parking as well for people that bring their kayaks. And is that, is that what this, where will that space be? Where will that parking be?
Those spaces could either be in the parking lot area on the northern portion of the parcel in which the launch is located, or it could be facilitated immediately west of Center Avenue, because we do have that central pedestrian promenade that's going to connect all the parking areas to the different features within the site. So there isn't, there is not parking immediately adjacent to the kayak launch, though.
As I look at this drawing, I see the parking to the north of, the north and west of, north of Building Four and west of Building Five on the northern boundary. But those are pedestrian walkways. They're not vehicular roadways, are they? Am I correct?
Correct. So we're talking about this parking area?
Yes.
Where they could leave their car, and then these promenades would connect them down to the...
Okay, so, okay.
They'd have to walk from parking to the...
But could they bring their cars down to launch their kayaks down there? No, they can't. They'll have to carry their kayaks? Is that what I'm...
Ryan Binkowski, for the record. These buildings are designed, the residential buildings are designed with the parking underneath, and you'll see there's a drive entry here. It would go through and loop through. That would be ungated in order to maintain circulation through the site, and somebody could certainly drive to this point, unload, and park.
All right. Having said that, in Building Five, they can drive through, will they need to turn around underneath the building then to exit on Building Five if they do that?
No, it's a continuous loop through. You can see it turns in here at this point.
I see where it turns in.
And then it comes out as this gray area.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
That really, that does conclude our presentation. We request the ability to respond further following staff's presentation. But the proposed project, again, 80 dwelling units, 29,000 square feet of commercial uses, really to anchor downtown at this key intersection and really be a catalyst for redevelopment in Benita. Through the architectural design, the design of civic space, the buffering, and our measurement of building height that we've restricted ourselves to, we would respectfully submit the 45-foot building height is appropriate for all buildings within the project. We've met at length with the community, as you can see from attendees here today, that they're excited about the project, and they understand that their properties are adjacent to a redeveloping downtown area, and the form of development will be different than what it is today, and will be more urban in scale. But as long as we have great oversight, great regulations, a great city architect to make sure that we're all working together and really addressing the appearance and feel and look of the buildings, we can certainly address all the compatibility items in your comp plan and LDC. And again, we have your staff recommendation of approval with just these few items on the conditions. So with that, I thank you for your attention.
Mr. Theriault.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more issue.
I have a question, too.
If I could.
Oh, sure.
There's nowhere do you show the setbacks, side yard setbacks on B2 and B3. Specific, excuse me, Building One and Two. It appears that you're right at the property line. I appreciate there has to be sidewalks and access around the buildings, and there's no dimensions on your plans relative to the building width versus the available property width. Could you clarify how much we have on each side of the building, because you certainly are going to have maintenance along your north walls and south walls of both of those buildings?
The code allows for actually zero-foot side yard setbacks on those parcels, so that you can have a contiguous length of building along your old 41 frontage. Voichek, do you want to speak to any side yard? We certainly have to meet fire code, which is addressed in the conditions in terms of building separation.
Well, just curious, you know, we're not downtown New York. We're in Benita Springs. And if you have zero setback, how are you going to maintain those walls, as eventually is going to be necessary, without requiring entrance to your adjacent property owner?
So that is a fairly typical condition in terms of zero-yard setback for downtown, even in a small city like this, is if you go down to Fifth Avenue in Naples, most of those buildings are all contiguous, and they share party walls. And there's no issue with maintenance that I'm aware of down there.
Aren't there common easements with the adjacent property owners for each of those cases, for the common wall?
I'm not aware of that. I'm not sure.
I'll just note that there's a condition under the development standards that says separation is required by Florida Building Code and National Fire Protection Association. So we'll comply with those when we bring in our buildings.
I had a question on the Buildings Four and Five. Staff had recommended that there be two stories over parking. And I guess what I heard you say was, you don't want to do that, and you would rather have the flexibility to set back the upper stories. Is that correct?
It's correct that we're seeking three stories over parking, based upon the more expansive setbacks proposed and upper story being recessed.
The upper story being set back?
We can commit to conditions such as that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Theriault.
Yes, sir. Just a couple of follow-up questions, if I may. Ms. Crespo, same slide. Building Five and Building Four are where staff and the applicant disagrees with the height. And could you tell me, I think it's Building Four that has some buildings due south, what those are?
Those are single-family residences.
All three?
Correct.
And you know what height they currently are?
They're a single story.
And what's that approximately in height?
Approximately 20 to 25 feet.
And then looking at Building Five north, there appears to be a structure. Do you see that?
This structure?
Yes, right there.
Yes.
Do you know what that is?
I believe that's also a single-family dwelling.
And do you know the height?
Also a single-family dwelling.
I think that's a two-story, 1920 older home.
Correct.
And do you know approximately how many feet that would be?
I do not. But as they've noted, it's not a single-story structure. It is two stories in height.
Two stories. And then the parking lots, the...
And then the parking lots, the one further to the west appears to have a structure due north. Do you know what that is?
I believe...
Right there.
I do not.
That makes two of us.
I need to pull up the property appraiser. I believe it was an older, single-family dwelling that's been converted to commercial usage.
Yeah. And also historical. I think it's a historical home, too.
I think it is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we start with staff, we've been going for almost an hour and a half. I protect my court reporters. If we could have a five-minute break?
Let's, let's make it a 10-minute break. Okay? So we'll reconvene at 10:40.